Also, how do you think the school district is doing from the perspective of regular taxpayers that maybe don't have any other affiliation with the school district?
Well, I think there's a couple of ways to look at this too. And you tend to, the issues that make the media tend to be the issues that are more dramatic or issues that are problems, rather than seeing the good things that happen every day throughout the school district. You know, our teachers, our coaches, our kids. There's just good things happen every day.
Sure.
We just happen to, sometimes as a society, we tend to like to focus on the 1% that creates the problems, rather than the 99% that are doing good things all the time.
Welcome back to season two of the 217 podcast presented by Decatur Earth mover Credit Union and hosted by me, Jess Younghouse. Thanks for listening and thanks for watching. We hope you enjoy it. Welcome back to the 217 podcast. We have Bill Clevenger here, currently the Decatur School Board President. So Bill, thanks for joining us today.
It's good to be here.
First, let's just dig in. I'm interested about your background as it relates to Decatur. And are you from here? And if you're not from here, where are you from and what brought you to the 217 area code?
Well, the 217 area code actually came about as a result of the Decatur Park District. I was born and raised in West Virginia.
Okay.
Clarksburg, Bridgeport, West Virginia. And then off to Marshall University for undergraduate school. And then to Charleston, West Virginia to work for a couple of years in Parks and Recreation.
Okay.
And from there to Indiana University for a master's degree in parks.
Okay.
And then to James Madison University to teach.
Okay.
So taught at the university level for five years and had a real itch to get back to doing Parks and Recreation and in the public sector. And had an opportunity to go back to Charleston, West Virginia as the Director of Parks Recreation and Public Grounds. So we were there for five years. And then the opportunity in Decatur, Illinois came along in 1988. I actually started work March 1st of 1988. And people in my profession in Parks and Recreation, really Illinois is the best law in the country
Oh, really?
To work under as far as the field of Parks and Recreation goes.
Oh, what makes it, what makes it like that? What are some highlights?
We're separate free standing units of government.
Okay.
And we work for directly for a board who's responsible for the provision of Parks and Recreation services. So they're focused on that. In Decatur, it's a little different because we have the airport in Decatur. So we not only have Parks and Recreation, but we have the airport to go along with that. So it was a really unique opportunity here. And we, we've had a great park district. We were Playtown USA, believe it or not, back in the 40s.
Okay.
By the Athletic Institute. So what a rich heritage and a great system to get involved in. And it's, it's been a great place for us as a family to be. So.
What kept you in Decatur for all these years?
Park District was just a great place to work. I had a great board to work for.
Sure.
And our kids were really comfortable in Decatur and made great friends here quickly. And by the way, my wife Candy and I celebrated 47 years of marriage yesterday.
Oh, my gosh, congratulations.
What, what a milestone.
Yes, absolutely.
She's a real trooper to put up with me for 47 years. So we came in March of 1988 and four children later. We have four boys, all graduates of MacArthur High School.
Okay.
And then off to other places. And now we have four grandchildren in the area. So one question that was always asked when I was getting ready to retire is, where are you going to go? Where are you and Candy going to go? We're not going to any place. Decatur's home. Our grandchildren are here. It's, it's really a good, comfortable place for families and it's been a great place to raise a family.
Yeah. Yep. I would second that as I'm raising my own now. So totally agree.
You have the good years ahead of you.
We do. We do. So what, I'm kind of curious, working at the park district for as many years as you did, what interactions did you have with, with the school district from that perspective, if any? How, do they co-mingle at all or is it totally separate or is there run ins that you have?
No, it's really not. And it, what ties in well for me in working with the schools is there's been such a relationship between the school district and the park district. I can think of, I believe it's five elementary schools that are adjacent to parks.
Sure.
And that was in the early stages of the school park concept. Decatur was a forerunner in that. So that relationship has been there. And, and incidentally, my third degree, my EDS degree from the University of Virginia is in community education, in the School of Education. So that ties in nicely to the relationship between the schools and parks. But I always found we had good relationships with the school district. We, we did programs in the schools. They used the parks. There was just a lot of trade back and forth.
Sure.
And, and at the end of the day, what are we there for? To make a better experience for our kids.
Sure. Absolutely. Okay. So now that we know a little bit about how you got to Decatur, background in the park district, um, let's talk about how you, I mean, what led you to want to be involved kind of in this civic level of being involved with the school district?
Well, I think my whole career is centered around public service. And my career, 45 years and I believe 2021, Labor Day 2021 retired. And had been retired just a little over a year, I think. And was approached by the school district about filling an unexpired term on the board.
Okay.
Dan Oaks had reached the end of his career and decided to relocate at the end of his work life. And so I thought that was going to be six or eight months, be an opportunity to get involved, fill that seat, help out however I could.
Sure.
And so during that period of time, I really got interested in how the school district operates, the services it provides, what it does for our community. And thought, you know, I, I have the time now, which I never had the time before to be able to do something like that. Also, it would have been somewhat of a conflict with my job at the park district. So never had, really had the time nor the inclination to do something like that. And all of a sudden it looked like a possibility.
Sure.
And so when you, when you kind of put all that together and you put my background together in education, and I come from a family of educators.
Okay.
My mother, my mother was a teacher. My sister was a teacher and a school administrator. Goes all the way back to my grandmother who ironically went to Marshall University. And when it was a normal school in Huntington, West Virginia. And that, you can tell how old that was as a normal school. So it goes back a long way. So the interest is there and the interest remains.
Okay.
I think it's, it's an exciting time. We have to, we have a lot of issues that we have to deal with. Issues change from when I was in school, what 50, 60 years ago to today. Issues completely different.
Sure.
Children completely different. Our young people lead very different lives today. And consequently, we make, we have to make different kinds of decisions today.
How, yeah, I mean, do you find yourself, is it hard to get people thinking differently? In positions of leadership? I mean, you, you laid it out perfectly there. Kids are different. And I think a lot of times there's this expectation that, well, we were all raised like that. So these kids should be raised like that, or this is how we did things. This is how these kids should do things too. But you know, no generation of kids is the same.
I think we, we all are guilty at times of falling into that
Sure.
Sort of that trap of the good old days.
Yeah.
Maybe the good old days were good. Maybe the good old days weren't so good. We just remember them as, as they were, so to speak. I, I really look at it as an advantage too, from, from my personal perspective. When having four boys ages, you know, in their mid 40s down to late 20s, they really give, kept me sort of in the moment.
Sure.
And gave me a different perspective with each one of their peer groups. It was kind of a different perspective. So, and now having grandchildren come along, it's a completely different perspective. But I, I don't think any of my kids have been hesitant to tell me that dad, need to look at that a little differently.
Out of touch.
So anyway, it's, it's all good.
Nice to have.
It is. It really has been great to have that perspective.
Yeah, absolutely. How in generally, I mean, generally speaking, how is the school board doing? Both from, I guess, the perspective of families that have kids in the school district, but also how do you think the school district is doing from the perspective of regular taxpayers that maybe don't have any other affiliation with the school district?
Well, I, I think there's a couple of ways to look at this too. And, and you tend to, the issues that make the media tend to be the issues that are more dramatic or issues that are problems, rather than seeing the good things that happen every day throughout the school district. You know, our teachers, our coaches, our kids. There's just good things happen every day.
Sure.
We just happen to, sometimes as a society, we tend to like to focus on the 1% that creates the problems, rather than the 99% that are doing good things all the time.
Yeah. Clickbait's a thing.
You know, it, it kind of is in today's world. But you just think about District 61 over the last few years and the Ag Academy, the Andreas Ag Academy. Five or 600 kids in that program now. It's state of the art. It's nationally recognized. We have the Jerry Dawson Civic Leadership Program that Dr. Morris runs that is moving kids into the next parts of their lives. And taking a look at that civic responsibility and that civic leadership. We have the dual, the dual credit programs, the Tech Academy with Richland. That leadership of Dr. Valdez at at Richland and Reverend Courtney Carson out there have done some really nice things with District 61 kids. And through innovative programming and partnerships throughout the community, we've had young people in various internships, practicums where they're, you know, the focus today is not necessarily always right to higher education, but into directly into a career path.
Sure.
Into technical, technical fields. So there's been a change and a shift in that. And many of the District 61 kids are moving directly into, for example, the trades and vocational career paths. So big changes, but there seems to be a real driving force in the community to get these kids involved, keep them involved, because at the end of the day, they are our future in Decatur. And we have to realize District 61 is 7,500 kids. And that's the future of our workforce indicator.
Yeah.
Is made up by those children, not children, young people.
Yeah, sure. It is, it's shocking to me that it's really taken so long to have such a robust Ag Academy introduced to the school district, just given, um, obviously our rich history, our rich, literally rich soil in Ag and, and the role that that plays in this community as we're adults. But that that was brought into kids and kids are now given the opportunity to really have a saturated look at what, what a career might be there. And then that kind of plays right into not pushing higher education on kids that maybe isn't the right fit for them. You know, I, I think back, that was, that was 100% the focus for me when I graduated 15 or 16 years ago. And I am so thankful that kids don't have to feel that pressure if that's not what's for them now. That's a total mind shift.
I think in, in today's world, kids have several different career paths to go down. And college may not be the best career path for them. That may not be their interest. But you know, when you look at things like the Ag Academy, the Jerry Dawson Leadership Academy, things like that, you have to also recognize that the foresight of someone like Howard Buffett, who took a chance and invested in the future of Decatur and the Decatur Public School System. And you look at that and you just have to say, you can't say thank you enough times
Yeah.
For having that confidence
Sure.
That it would grow and be successful. And now look at where that has, has evolved.
Yeah.
And in the, in the near future, our students will be in a new facility.
Yeah.
State of the art kinds of learning experiences. And how exciting can that be for the Decatur area?
Yeah, that's awesome. I feel like we just talked about successes that people that pay taxes should be proud of.
Well, I think, you know, when you, when you talk about taxpayers too, it's an investment.
Yeah.
And what we're doing is, you know, I'm a taxpayer. I've lived in the corporate bounds of, of the city of Decatur since we moved here 36 years ago. And my children were the beneficiary of public school education at MacArthur High School. And I think when you look at your investment, we have, we have things in District 61 that we have to do better. We have to do better in our academic achievement. We have to do better in our, one of the things that I said when I was running for this board was our K through three education is sets our kids up for life.
Sure.
You know, as, as my sister, who was a lifelong educator, said to me one day when we were having a conversation, we talk early in the mornings and she said to me, you know, by K through three, you learn to read. From fourth grade on, you read to learn. And I really thought a lot about that. And we need to put these kids in a position as they evolve out of third grade. We need to put these kids in a position to be successful. Because what we're doing is setting them up for life. And as they matriculate through
Sure.
Our K through 12 public school system, we're responsible for their futures.
Now, okay, so third graders, really that kindergarten of third grade that you just talked about, those kids were, um, everybody was heavily affected by COVID. But those kids specifically in regards to education were affected from the standpoint that they, at some tenure in that timeframe, were not given like traditional education or, or learning of things like how to read or count or, or do some of these basic things that maybe we take for granted. But I guess looking back before COVID, how do you feel like the school district was doing, preparing those kindergarten to third graders for success?
I think even pre-COVID, we had work to do. I think it's, it's an ongoing process. And I will say that at this point, Dr. Clark, while she's only been in her role, a full school year now, I think she's laser focused on improving the achievement levels of our kids throughout the system, but in particular, giving our kids a good start that will help them work their way through their K-12 education. And then in whatever field they choose to make their career in. Because in today's world, you know, when you look at it, there's very, very few, if any, careers out there or jobs that don't require reading and math skills to be able to be successful in those. So consequently, we set that, we set that groundwork. And we're a huge part of a kid's success or failure. So I think she's laser focused on that. And you know, when we talk about Dr. Clark, she's been there one year, I think. It's her first year in the job. We have an issue in District 61 where, um, I know I've said this a hundred times over my time working at the park district, but Dr. Clark is my 17th school superintendent.
Yeah.
And I was in the job. So we've lived here 36 years, but I was in my job 34. We can't continue like that.
Right.
Stable leadership leads to stable organizations. And if we want to have a high performing school district, we're going to have to have high performing administration, high performing teachers, high performing TAs, high performing coaches. Everybody has to be committed to the end that we'd like to see.
Sure. What do you think is the reason for turnover in that job?
Yeah, I, I think that probably over the years, there are probably a variety of reasons. Some people have moved on to different school superintendencies. Other people probably got frustrated under job for one reason or another. I would say one of the things that as a board, we have to do collectively, the seven of us, is to be better. And that's to provide the high level leadership that a board should provide on a day to day basis. And when, when boards are high performing, organizations tend to be high performing. So I think that's a, that's a challenge for us as a board. As we move forward into the next decade or so, is to, you know, as the old saying goes, everybody has a lane. Every once in a while, you're going to move out of that lane a little bit, but you kind of got to be aware there's a lane.
Sure.
And there's a responsibility and we need to take that seriously.
Yeah. So let's talk about school, the school buildings. That's kind of a hot topic that, I don't know, I guess I probably see it mostly on social media. I'm, I'm not that in tune with what some of the complaints are or what some of the reasons are for this being such a hot topic. So, so let's talk about school buildings.
Yeah, I think right now, of course, we're in a crisis. That crisis grew out of the split Dennis School in, we have Dennis and the old French Academy, for those people who have been around, more seasoned citizens.
I know what French Academy is.
So both those buildings have structural issues.
Okay.
And at the end of the day, we're assessing those structural issues. I know there are, there are folks out there who are desperately looking for somebody to blame. I don't know that looking for somebody to blame at this point in time, when you have a whole leadership group that's been in place, the longest tenured leader of that group is 18 months.
Yeah.
So you've had a lot of different people in a lot of different positions. And, um, you know, the structural reports are there. They're up online for people to look at it. They can absolutely read those. And then from those glean the information probably that they need. But we have those two buildings. We're having, right now, we're having actual contractors come into the buildings, take a look. We've had our architects in there, our engineers in there. And we're trying to assess what the repairs would be, how much those repairs would cost. And then simultaneously with that, we're embarking on a study of all the school buildings in the Decatur Public School System. So that we develop a strategic five to 10 year capital plan of all the needs of those buildings. And then we can begin to roll forward with that planning process as well as what we need to be doing every year with every building in the system.
Yeah.
And you know, just when you think about it, our enrollment has been declining. So consequently, there's going to have to be conversations about how do you strategically address
Sure.
Long-term enrollment declines. Do we need the same number of facilities? Do, how are we going to best meet the needs of our student population moving forward into the next five, 10, 20 years?
Yeah.
It's going to be really important that we think big picture and we think strategically about how that might happen. Because one of the things right now that I think we're very comfortable with, when you look at the bottom line of the school district budget right now, it looks pretty healthy. But we had a lot of money come in during the COVID years. And at the end of the day, that picture probably in the next few years is going to change.
Sure.
And as that changes, how are we going to address those? And when you talk about, you asked the question about the taxpayer. I think we owe it to our community, our taxpayers, to be vigilant with our financial resources.
Absolutely.
I think there's an expectation for that.
Absolutely.
So as we move over the next few months, you're going to see the district looking at these facilities and beginning to develop an overall master plan for what the buildings would look like. But concurrently, looking at our demographical information to say, where might we be?
Sure.
And what do we need to be doing to address this shrinking school population?
There's, and it's a shame that I, I do kind of feel like the school district gets called out, but there's other business, you know, you see other businesses or vacant buildings because of this, you know, decline in population that we've seen over the last 15 years. So the park district is not alone in that. And I just have kind of felt like you guys are taking a little bit of a brunt of a hit from, from criticism when other companies are kind of in the same boat.
I, I think we're all in a boat together.
Yeah.
And, and you know, we look at this, when you think about the school system and you think about the future of our community, the school system has to be one of the top two or three things, if not the first thing that comes to mind when you think about the success of our community going forward. So I think it's really important that we look at that as a real challenge. And how are we going to address that challenge going forward? And we as a board, working together, and boards like a team.
Sure.
You, you have to approach this, there are seven players on this team. All of them come from different, different backgrounds, different perspectives. But at the end of the day, we all have to work together to hopefully make this school system go forward and be better in the future.
What are some other issues you see, um, maybe that you're kind of in the midst of right now? Or that you could potentially see being issues five, 10, 15 years down the road?
I, I think really our strategic planning is going to be important. Because the more issues you can get ahead of, the better off you're going to be. You don't want to lead from behind all the time. You want to be ahead of issues. And you hopefully can anticipate community trends, community actions, community needs. And as, if we're able to do that and we do a good job forecasting and projecting, then we're going to be able to probably create a better future for our student population as well as our, our teachers and all the employment and all the employees of, of the school district.
Yep.
So again, incumbent upon the board to do a good job.
Yeah. Let's talk a little bit about the board. What is the makeup? There are seven people on it.
Seven people.
They're elected officials. Who, who is on it?
Well, right now, we have our, our seven member board. Jason Dion is the Vice President of the Board right now.
Okay.
We have Kevin Collins Brown. We have Al Scheider. We have Alana Banks. We have Mark Reynolds and we have Will Wetzel.
Okay.
And in the last, the last election, Will Wetzel, Mark Reynolds and myself were elected to the board. So the next time around, in two years, we elect members of the board every two years.
Okay.
So the next time around, there will be four people
Okay.
Up for election to the school board. So, but we, like I said, we all, we all come from different backgrounds and perspectives. The key to any successful board is being able to put some of those in perspective and come together as a team. You know, you can't have a basketball team with five different basketballs.
Sure.
Just doesn't work very well, does it? So consequently, you can kind of use that analogy to a school board. You, you may bring your ball to the game, but at some point in time, you have to put four balls in the bag.
Sure.
And you play with one ball. So we're, we are, I think we're doing a pretty good job right now of beginning to coalesce as a board and move forward. I think Dr. Clark is going to, you're going to continue to see her
Sure.
Bring programs and actions to the board. Her focus, I think one of the things we did last spring was, one of the issues has been frankly, student discipline, student behavior.
Yeah.
And, and Dr. Clark has taken a stance on that.
Yeah.
And the board has supported her stance on that. So I, I think children need to be able to come to our school. So I, I think children need to be able to come to our schools in a safe
Yeah.
environment.
Absolutely.
Kids are gonna learn better, they're gonna perform better. Everything goes better when a kid feels safe, secure and, uh, can come and be there for what they're supposed to be there for, and that's to learn.
Yep. Um, gosh, I, I would venture to say the Decatur Public School District isn't alone in school districts and struggling with how to address disciplinary issues. And not just alone on the public school sector, but private schools too. I mean, I think that that's a struggle that everybody probably has in finding the correct balance to be able to address some situations that arise.
I would agree. It's just, we're here, we see it all the time. The national trends are no different than we see here. But it's here, we're responsible for it.
Yeah.
So it becomes front and center with us. Um, and as it should be.
Yep.
There are times that we really don't need to worry about what our sister cities are doing. What we need to really worry about is what are we doing and how can we do it better?
Yeah.
And I think that's, if we get focused on that and focused on improving ourselves.
Sure.
Um, sometimes you really need to look around you and say, what are our other school districts doing? But when it comes to me, anyway, when it comes to behavioral issues and things like that, we need to focus on us.
Yep.
And what our expectation is. And you know, young people, if you set expectations, most of the time they'll live up to those expectations.
Yep.
You have to set expectations.
Sure. Uh, okay, so you mentioned before, when we were talking about kinda what brought you to Decatur, um, your life in public service, really. That's what your career's been. It's always been in public service. So how, I guess, why was public service important to you to begin with? When you were young and going to college and kind of figuring out your career path? And like, what would you say to kids to encourage them to be involved in public service? Um, maybe not as in-depth as your, you know, whole career has been, but how do you, how do you encourage people to get involved, to know, um, things about their public servants and, and who they serve and things like that?
Well, I, I think when you choose or choose not to get involved, I think it's, if our communities are going to prosper and our communities are going to get better, we have to encourage generations that follow. People like, I'm, I'm at the end of that generational curve. Um, people beginning that generational curve are 20-somethings, are 30-somethings, are 40-somethings, uh, and so on and so forth. Uh, I think it's important that we look at our community as where we live, where we're going to raise our children or have raised our children, or if you just want to look at the future of our community. Um, there are many public boards out there that need responsible, um, down-to-earth, common sense-thinking people to get involved and be part of that. It doesn't have to be, I mean, I, I, the prime example that I can think of was Jack Kenny, who worked in the Decatur Public School System for, must've been 40 years. And he was on the park board for 28 years. That is true commitment.
Sure.
To a cause at that point in time. You don't have to give 28 years, but can you give four years?
Sure.
Of service to help make your community a better place. I think that's really important. You know, from my family's perspective, uh, you know, my wife Candy was at Heritage Behavioral Health Center for, she was a CFO and ended her career as a CEO for 33 years, I think it was. And anytime I think about me being committed, she's really committed.
Sure.
Um, that, that to me was always a true calling for her. So as a family, our kids kinda grew up seeing that and seeing what she did on a day-to-day basis and what I did on a day-to-day basis. So I would encourage anybody who is even giving it a fleeting thought to dip their toe in the water and give it a try. And it, even if it's into a not-for-profit board for a while, to get a feel for it, uh, maybe being in a publicly elected board's not your spot. But look at the number of not-for-profit boards in town that need, uh, good board members to jump in and help out. Um, your community is really what you make it. I've heard over the years, so many people will say, well, there's nothing to do. Well, you know, you can make things to do.
Sure.
It's what you choose. A community, I'm convinced, we've lived in Bloomington, Indiana, Harrisonburg, Virginia, Charleston, West Virginia, Huntington, West Virginia, and Decatur, of course, the longest of any place in our career. But a community's what you make it.
Yeah.
If you choose to get out and you choose to make friends and you choose to get involved, then you're probably gonna make where you live a pretty good place.
Yeah.
And so I would, I would encourage anybody, take the leap.
Yeah. Um, to wrap up our time, what's one thing you're just really, the one thing that really makes you the most proud about the school district?
Well, I think right now, we're, we're in a position to make some big strides. And I, I think at this point in time, we have good leadership in place. I think we have good teachers. I think we have good support staff, uh, throughout the district. And I, I think we just all need to jump in the same boat and start rowing in the same direction. Because I think the future of Decatur depends on the Decatur Public School System. And we, we all need to be doing our part. And it's not just the school board, the school employees, it's our community in general, needs to jump in, help out. And if you have ideas, we're always open to listen to good ideas. Uh, we don't have a corner on good ideas.
Yeah.
So anybody that has ideas or thoughts that are gonna help us make a better future for our kids, please let us know.
Mm-hmm. Uh, how can people reach the school board, the school district with ideas, with thoughts? What's the most appropriate way? We talked kinda before we started recording about people stopping you at the golf course and at the grocery store and anywhere in between. Um, but, but how, how can people get in touch?
It's pretty easy on the, on the dps.org website. Um, all the school board members have an email up there. Uh, you can shoot us an email. I'm actually one of those dinosaurs that has a listed phone number still, so. Uh, and I, I always welcome the calls, but I've, I've always said for years, and you hear this as an old cliche, but it's so true, your local elected officials have more impact on your day-to-day life than anybody who goes to Washington DC, day in and day out. It's the people you see in the grocery store. It's the people you see at the Little League games, the basketball games, the golf course, the, you name it. It's you see your local elected officials every place. That's your opportunity to impact your day-to-day life in a much greater way than some elected official at the federal level or at, at state level, they're pretty accessible. But your, your local school board, your local park board, your city council, we, we live here, we're in the same grocery stores. We're in da-da-da-da, um, all the time. So, and people are very, they're not hesitant to jump up and give you their opinion, which is great.
That's nice. And, and a double-edged sword sometimes, I'm sure.
It is. And a lot of times it's a matter of, if it's a controversial issue, sometimes it's just a matter of clarification of fact.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
You know, sometimes it's like the circle when you were in elementary school or high school. You start a story in the circle and by the time it gets back around the circle, wow.
It's not what it started as.
Not the same story.
Uh, well, thank you so much for joining us, um, on the 217 Podcast. And I think that I can certainly say I'm glad to have a school board and members of the school board that, um, that feel so passionate and excited about taking, um, the Decatur School District on to the next level.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Yep. Thanks, Bill.
Thanks.
Make sure to like and follow Decatur Earth mover Credit Union on our social channels for more content.